I got here a little bit before work. So how are you? So we're back there then?
It's clear, it's okay.
Whatever works for everybody. Yesterday he was with the fight that we were so good for really helped me. You know, whatever works for everybody. I mean, if you want to call me somewhere over there, just sit right there. I don't like, I don't like to, I don't, I mean, as soon as people go by and they see me talking to myself, they're like, why is she talking to herself? It's normal.
Yeah, but you always bring the camera.
No, I don't, no, no, I don't, I don't like that. But no, whatever works for everybody, I'm very open, I don't want to be in anybody's way. Whatever works for you guys, I'm open.
They were concerned more that people were in your way.
I don't know, they told you last week, it was interesting, it was crowded, it was full, and none of these were working, plenty batteries were out. But I don't know, I waved at them, what happens is that whenever you should be, and I'm really careful. So we had about 10, 15 moms, because they use Spanish, and these were all tangled up. I was doing this, and Nick, she did, and they go, boy, if they hire you, how come you're going to bring it to court? Well, then I said, no, I'm sorry, it's not mine. So about 11 o'clock, I waved them down, they came into each other's battery, and you know, I didn't do it for this, I was, that was, that was interesting, but, you know, I folded all this like this for people, because I could not get him, get him like, um, so, um, yeah.
So one night, you come earlier, so you can untangle it.
I did, yeah, I entangled, no, I did it myself, I did this that day, I entangled all the equipment, and I turned all of this off, I did one night here over there.
He does? Because when it's a long meeting, it doesn't mean on that one.
Yeah, you could have, I'm open, wherever we're shooting, so.
They're fine, because people come.
Yeah, yeah, whatever works, I'll, I'll see, if, if things kept appearing, then that would be, you know.
Don't worry about when they do something like that.
They do, or they sit here too. I was kind of here, I don't want to be. It wasn't really, yeah. Oh, now, I'm the second week of June, right? I know, yeah, we have a really important meeting, we're all going to have to prepare. A week? So I mean, I'll call you this week and tell you if I can change it. If it's okay with you. Not this week. The next week wasn't too bad, from one to about 1:30.
Yeah, very long, it was longer than three hours, but it was three and a half minutes. They just wanted to get the budget down.
They did, yeah, it was really good. Still wasn't bad, it wasn't bad, I mean, took one, five minutes trying to show. So, yeah. And that I was there. I don't know. Some odd ones, I see some people from the redistricting commission, actually, the whole panel, they're honestly a bit of a bad one. It's going to be a good, right, before June? That's what they're, yeah. And I didn't see a special agenda either.
There's going to be a supplemental.
I didn't see it, yeah. Yeah, I was, I didn't see it either. But the whole, yeah, the, the, most of them, I guess. Because I interpreted for, for every single meeting, so I remember.
You know better than I do.
Just the faces, if you were there, you would too.
Economic development and employment, hopefully, issues still there, but because it says here.
Those have gone a lot of the time, apparently, but the redistricting, they were supposed to be seeing parties with the brush. I think so, and once, because it was, it was really fighting, not fighting, but people all over the cathedralist, it's from Mr. Don, and when he transferred his dialogue made, so he can speak for district, I mean, for the brush, when she made her presentation, and that's a second one, so nobody works, so what, Stan, and give it all to me, but also give, give some more voting power to him. I think so, and once, because it was, it was really fighting, not fighting, but people all over the cathedralist, it's from Mr. Don, and when he transferred his dialogue made, so he can speak for district, I mean, for the brush, when she made her presentation, and that's a second one, so nobody works, so what, Stan, and give it all to me, but also give, give some more voting power to him. I think so, and once, because it was, it was really fighting, not fighting, but people all over the cathedralist, it's from Mr. Don, and when he transferred his dialogue made, so he can speak for district, I mean, for the brush, when she made her presentation, and that's a second one, so nobody works, so what, Stan, and give it all to me, but also give, give some more voting power to him. I think so, and once, because it was, it was really fighting, not fighting, but people all over the cathedralist, it's from Mr. Don, and when he transferred his dialogue made, so he can speak for district, I mean, for the brush, when she made her presentation, and that's a second one, so nobody works, so what, Stan, and give it all to me, but also give, give some more voting power to him. I think so, and once, because it was, it was really fighting, not fighting, but people all over the cathedralist, it's from Mr. Don, and when he transferred his dialogue made, so he can speak for district, I mean, for the brush, when she made her presentation, and that's a second one, so nobody works, so what, Stan, and give it all to me, but also give, give some more voting power to him. Something happens to, you know, it's a ball, something falls, you know, that's, that's part of.
Morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall to Council Chambers, we're getting ready to begin the meeting.
Vamos a empezar. Tenemos ocho miembros ahora, ya se están acordando. The bunch is a council, Perry Reyes besides, estamos diez miembros para un coro. Here, for instance, here's Alantia, Garcetti, Pacheco, Ridley Thomas is your wife. Está muy difícil para le pasar aquí la salada, y está lento con esa salada bien.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome again to City Hall, to Council Chambers, and to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, May 21st, here is 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and we always invite the public to attend council meetings and participate. We can be viewed from home, live on your cable station, Channel 35, we can also be viewed live from home, or via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ernstson, Galantria, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Holden, Labonch, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Stein, Padilla, ten members present in the coro, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, this being Tuesday and the first regular meeting of the week, we do have both a salute to the flag and a moment of inspiration scheduled. At this point in time, I'd like to ask for the honors of leading us in the salute to the flag, former regular face from the White House, and President Emeritus of the Redistricting Commission for the city, Mr. John Emerson, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, as well, we have a special guest to lead us in our moment of inspiration, Rabbi Kniewski.
And Rabbi Kniewski.
See Rabbi here. Quite an entrance. What better substitute?
I understand that the procedure is different than when I used to come down here to offer invitations. Now I understand that I'm here to give a moment of inspiration. And the truth of the matter is that you who take on the responsibilities, which are yours, are really an inspiration to all of us. But if there is a word of scripture that we all share together, it's the biblical view that it is good and it is pleasant when we dwell together in unity. And I think that as you are about your work today, and as I soon take on some new responsibilities as a colleague of yours, I think it's terribly important that we especially emphasize the word unity. That while we live in what Buber refers to as a set of collectivities, the work that you're doing and the work that will be entrusted to me if I have your permission, will be to establish community, to establish community, to establish collaborations, to establish the opportunity for people to work together in coalition. So we have much to do together, you obviously have much to do together this morning. And I know that as you are doing your work, and not only are you blessed by that God whom we all worship, but in many ways you bless us as well. Muchas gracias.
Members of the council, we do have one presentation scheduled for this morning, but we are waiting on Councilmember Holden to join us to conduct that presentation, so without objection, let us begin with the matters before us today. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Labonch moves, and Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Ms. Han seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, item number 11 is a confirmation of Helen and Johnson to the Board of Animal Regulation Commissioners, and this is an item that has been waived by committee, a public hearing has not been held.
As Ms. Perry escorts Ms. Johnson to the table, I do not have requests from members of the public to be heard in regards to Ms. Johnson's deployment, so we shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Are there any council members wishing to be heard, Ms. Miskowski?
I'm happy to move approval of this nomination appointment to this commission. I did meet with Ms. Johnson, and she talked about her commitment in the communities and the issues and concerns, and she is aware of in the community that animal services will have to be paying attention to, and I think she is going to be a very able and capable and important community member on this commission, so I'm happy to recommend her for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, I wanted to take a few moments just to say some words about Helen, because she's an extraordinary woman, a woman of courage and valor, and has much to share with the rest of the city. She is a community-based person with great love for people, and greeting her community, and understanding what it takes to make a neighborhood, and so I was very pleased when the mayor asked for recommendations, she was first and foremost in my mind, and I know she will be a compassionate and assertive animal regulation commissioner.
Thank you. For the members wishing to be heard in regards to Ms. Johnson's appointment, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Congratulations, you were confirmed.
Thank you, thank you very much.
For your service to the city. Fourth with, please. Before proceeding to the next item, members, we have been joined by Councilmember Holden. Mr. Holden, are we ready for our presentation this morning? Do we need a minute? The president, members, I think they're bringing this to the, because that's there. Okay, let's wait a couple of minutes, all right, and we'll do this the right way. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
On the regular agenda, items known as for public hearing, items one through four are reconsideration of hearings, building and safety, confirmation of assessments.
Items one through four now before us, I do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on these items, we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials, items one through four, any specials, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Next items, items for which public hearings have been held, items five through 10, items five and six are ordinances, do you wish to hold those on the desk for 12 council members?
Let's hold all ordinances on the desk, we do expect perfect attendance today. Items seven through 10 before us, members wishing to call any specials, any specials, items seven through 10, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Next items, items for which public hearings have not been held, 11 through 26, item 11 has already been approved, that would be 12 through 26, and 12 has ordinances, so actually, that would be 13 through 26.
Item 13 through 26, I do have cards on item 18, let's call that special, without objection, members, we shall consider items 11 through 26 today, items not having held public hearings, do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on the balance of the items, so we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials, beginning with Mr. Holden, 13, 14, and 17. 13, 14, and 17 called special by Mr. Holden, any other specials? Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
On the, excuse me, next item is item number 27, which is a closed session, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Hold closed session items on the desk, including item 32.
On the supplemental agenda, items 28 through 31 are items for which public hearing have not been held, items 28 and 29 are ordinances.
Total ordinances on the desk, items 30 and 31 before us, do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on those items, we shall also deem those public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call either of those items special? Any specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, inasmuch as 12 members or council members are present, do you wish to take up the ordinances now?
Let's take all ordinances.
That would be five and six, 12 and 28 and 29.
Members wishing to call any of the ordinance items special? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those ordinances are approved, fourth with on 20 and 29, please. And fourth with on item number 10, please. Does that complete the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, going back to the items called special.
Before, before we take those, Mr. Holden, I see your cue, Chair recognizes Mr. Holden for a presentation.
El presidente reconoce a señor Holden para la presentación.
Mr. President, would you like to join me here?
Me gustaría dormir conmigo, creo que es adecuado.
Angela, these names in order.
Están sus nombres en orden.
All right, fine. Mr. Emerson?
Mr. President, members, we had a charter change a few years back, and it was voted on by the people of the city of Los Angeles, which required, which they said, we shall remove the authority for rejoining the boundaries, the districts, and give that authority to a independent commission. And usually, when you do something for the first time, there are a lot of problems, called growing pains, and you have a lot of problems solved. But this operation moved as smooth as silk. And these people heard all of the comments, not just from the public, as they have public meeting hearings around the city of Los Angeles, but also members of the city council. I tell you that I had one of the first meetings in my district with a tremendous turnout. We had people from all parts of the city in that meeting area who addressed the members of the commission. The commission are all volunteers. I must tell you that, and they are good soldiers for the city of Los Angeles. They did an outstanding job, and the record would show the next 10 years, and 10 years after that, how well they worked for each and every one of us. The chairman of that commission, Mr. Emerson, who was an assistant to the city attorney for a period of time, did such a good job there, he was promoted to assist the president of the United States Government Affairs. And did an excellent job, he's now back at home, and we called upon him to perform this service as well. I think Ms. Miskowski. If she didn't appoint you, I was going to appoint you. I also appointed Jack at Dupont Walker, who represents my area. President members, I think we should hear your comments. The president of the council, he was at a reception this morning with the mayor, honoring and showing consideration and appreciation for the commission, for the city, who drew the boundaries for the city of Los Angeles, and I was also told for the commission, that drew the lines for the school board, school districts. So we'll hear from the president of the council, and then we'll hear from Mr. Emerson, who's president of the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. If I can also have Mr. Keely come forward. Because the two commissions that Councilmember Holden referred to really took on a gargantuan task, and I consider all the commissioners, both for the city council redistricting commission and the school board redistricting commission, as pioneers. For the first time in the city's history, we called upon a group of citizens from around the city to take on the task of redistricting and the challenge of redistricting. As Mr. Holden mentioned, redistricting comes around only once every 10 years, and if ever there was a political process, it is redistricting. The responsibility of adjusting the district boundaries post the census, taking into account and into consideration the new census information, taking into account demographic information, taking into account economic indicators, information, taking into account population changes and growth areas, taking into account social service needs, taking into account... Last, but certainly not least, all the political considerations, hearing from interest groups from around the city, hearing from elected officials, but most importantly, listening to communities and what communities want and what communities need. All the commissioners are to be applauded for having invested their time, their energy, their effort, their attention to months and months of public hearings, and having worked under the leadership of the two presidents standing here with us to devise two maps that were forwarded to this council for consideration. One proposed new council district boundaries, one proposed new school district boundaries. And as you all know, we have a redistricting committee now that's taken those maps into consideration and reviewing those to forward full recommendations to the full council. But we wanted to take an opportunity very appropriately to not only recognize, but to commend and to thank both commissions for their hard work and for their success. Members of the council, members of the public, let us now hear from the two presidents, Mr. Emerson, Mr. Keely.
Mr. Padilla, before we hear from them, we have had some councilmembers who would like to speak. I would first like to recognize Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President, appreciate it. And colleagues, Mr. Emerson, Mr. Keely, and all the commissioners who are here in the audience today, I apologize that I wasn't able to make it to the reception earlier honoring you and commending you for your efforts, but I want to join in what Mr. Padilla just said, but how important it is to commend all of you for your service. But I think there's nothing we can do that will be more meaningful by way of a commendation to all of you for your efforts, for your service, than what I expect we will be doing in the coming weeks here in this council, which is, we are poised in the Ad hoc Committee on Redistricting, which I chair, to vote on the matters that have been put before us, and I'm not going to predict the outcome because there are still some matters that are in dispute, but I have very little doubt that at the end of the day, the product, the work product of this council is going to very closely resemble the work product of your commissions, and that is the most fitting testament and commendation to all of you for your efforts. The fact that, at the end of the day, it's my anticipation that the ordinance, the law that we will pass will reflect your many months and months and months upon months of service to the city of Los Angeles. You did something which, to my knowledge, has really never been done before, where you, you took a process that had heretofore been a closed-door, smoke-filled-room process, and you went out into the community, you went out into the media to try to get the public involved and interested. And you know what? Frankly, not everyone in the public was all that interested. Not everyone decided to become involved, and perhaps that's as it should be, but you did something unique, which is you tried to get people involved, and you garnered, I think, as much public interest and comment as could possibly occur on what would otherwise be perhaps a dry and uninteresting subject matter. You made it real, you made it matter to people, you made it matter to them and their communities. You went out to so many communities and held so many hearings, and I know all of us on the council followed your efforts closely. And everyone in the city of Los Angeles, for the next 10 years, everyone, whether they realize it or not, is going to benefit tremendously from your efforts these past several months. So I want to personally extend my thanks to all of you, but I want to say once again, I think, that the true measure of respect for what you will, or what you have done will come in the coming weeks from this council. So thank you all, to the commissioners who are here and to those who couldn't make it today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. The chair recognizes Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues. I certainly do want to publicly tell all of you who agreed to serve in this capacity that we owe you a huge debt of gratitude. We really are grateful for your work. We congratulate you on a process, as we've talked about, that has never been done before. And as one of the elected charter reform commissioners who actually put this in our new city charter, we felt very strongly that the process we do every 10 years really had to be opened up to the public. It really had to be a process where neighborhoods, communities, had an opportunity to come and testify for the commission on the things that mattered to them. And many people think what can one wise do here or there, and yet, as we found out here, it's a very emotional, it's a very passionate, it's a very strong feeling that people have when it comes to keeping their community together. And I appreciate your long hours, your volunteer service. We really have set the standard for what I hope will remain, the process that takes place every 10 years. And I really hope that we will look long and hard at the work that you did and the hours that you put into doing what you thought was a responsible action that would benefit all the people of Los Angeles, in the school district as well as the city. So thank you for your hard work. I hope we can honor what you did.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Now I recognize Councilmember Labange.
Well, I followed during my campaign all of your meetings and attended several of them, and just want to congratulate you for putting this process in public. That is what I heard consistently through my campaign and knocking on doors. They wanted a chance to give feedback, participate in the process, and ensure that communities of interest stay together. It was quite a task, and I think that both commissions really tried to involve the community. Not everyone agreed, and sometimes that means you did a good job because you actually looked at all of the issues. So I wanted to stand as well and congratulate not only John Emerson and Mike Keely, but all the other members of both of the commissions who really gave back to the city in public service. And thank you, and hopefully in 10 years you'll be available to help us again. Next process. So congratulations, and thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Labange.
Madam President, members of council, the commission, to all of you, I want to thank you personally. I attended some of the commission meetings that you had, and I think the experience, I don't want to see a hand raised here, but would anyone want to trade their experience? No. You were called upon, and I know Senator Roberti, who serves so well, the 4th District. No one raised their hand, Mike Keely. This experience is a tremendous experience because of the struggle. I remember the late-night meeting down at the MTA, you know, and you saw that. But I also think from a personal, from your personal side, the friendships that you made and the associations you made with other commissioners, learning about other parts of this great city, learning about other concerns that neighborhoods have, and the importance of what it all means, what it all means in the city. So I wanted to thank you, Mr. Emerson, I wanted to thank you, and Mr. Keely, I wanted to thank you, and Mr. President, and Mr. Holden, thank you for bringing this great commission in for the due recognition that you deserve. And before you leave City Hall today, I hope you all visit the 4th floor because it's a great gallery of all the old historic pictures of this city, from the great open spaces of the West San Fernando Valley to the great border of Los Angeles. And it's so clear today, spend a visit at our new, really, tower, and look out to the beauty of this city and the beauty of the mountains that surround the city of Angeles. Thank each and every one of you for your service and for the time away from your families. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, now recognizes Mr. Checo.
Madam President and colleagues, I just wanted to commend all the volunteers. I know that was very much a labor of love because, as Councilmember Hahn and Zine and myself know, that as you volunteer and go through a major project, it's a sacrifice of not only your time, but your own family's time because you're away from your family. So I wanted to commend you and thank you all for doing this great service to the city of Los Angeles. For the first time in many years, redistricting has had a very open, a very challenging process and a very inclusive process, and you've done a great service to us by bringing us some maps that we can work off of, and we really feel that we've given us a great starting point. I believe at the end of the day, I can't speak for the school district maps, but I can tell you that at the end of the day, I think when you look at the council maps, about 95% to 98% of your work will end up being the final product, so I think that's a great starting point.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Perry. Jan.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I too wanted to say thank you very much for your incredible contribution to drafting a vision for our city for the next 10 years. I know it was difficult, and I know it was arduous, but I appreciate all that all of you did on both commissions, and particularly Juanita Tate. Thank you so much for fighting hard for fair share in the 9th council district. Congratulations.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Ms. Zine.
Madam Chair, thank you, colleagues. I know when you go onto a commission with no budget, with no staff, and as you recognize, it's a difficult task to put it all together and to take the representatives of the city, the ones that are selected to serve with you, and you lead them down that path, and you lead them to that final product, and I know what it's like from my experience on the elected charter reform commission, no budget, no staff, and it's kind of like putting things together with bubble gum and baling wire just to make it work. So your dedication is recognized, your commitment to the city of Los Angeles is recognized. Congratulations for bringing a product to us, a plan that we are fine-tuning, that we'll implement shortly, but to both of you, Mr. Emerson, Ms. Keely, congratulations. I know your love and dedication to the city, and it is due to be recognized. Thank you both.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Reyes.
Colleagues, I also rise to thank you for your good work. In a day in which we're trying to understand how is it possible that one would want to split up this great city, you were able to provide that venue for people from the community, from all communities, to step up and talk about what's important to them, what makes up their neighborhood, what are their points of interest. And I know you struggled hard to make sure you followed the principles of the committee, and I thank you for that great work. I want to take the time to thank Irma Rodriguez, who was my appointee. She did a stellar job. Thank you for putting out what she felt was important, what we felt was important, and essentially continued looking at all the benefits for everyone. Interesting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. It's all been said, but there's one thing, and I want to thank both of the committees, the commissions, for their hard work. I want to thank Daniel Weiss, the commissioner that I appointed, for doing an extraordinary job. I also just wanted to publicize for those folks who are watching out there, when you ask if this council, if this administration understands, hears what the valley is talking about, this map reflects that, and I really want to underscore that. I know it was said passing, but there's a new valley seat that is fully in the valley if it passes the way that you've put it forward, and that is critical to understanding what people are asking for at the same time and protect the important seats that are for communities in this city as well. And I think you can all be proud that we are hearing what people say, and for those who are writing the defense on the succession thing, let these seats have some time to function, let them have some time to see the light of day, and I think we will all be a more unified city as a result of your work. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, and one more time, the chair recognizes Councilman Labange.
And I forgot to mention the staff. I want to thank the staff of the commissions that did their work. Thank you, staff.
All right. Now, Mr. Emerson, Mr. Keely.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Councilmember Holden, Acting President Mysikowski, and all the council members. I just want to make three points. First of all, I want to thank the members of the public who attended our hearings, took time out from their families and their family lives to speak so passionately and with such great conviction about what they felt we needed to do in this process. And I will tell you, I for one learned a great deal about this city. I think all our commissioners did. And in particular, we learned a great deal about the hard work that you councilmembers do every day as you're out there in your communities. And so my second thanks is to you, not only for doing that work, but for appointing on both commissions. I can only speak for our own, but just a stellar group of individuals, and I know they'll all be recognized by name, or I would be doing that myself right now. But I can't tell you, we treated each other with great respect. We learned a lot from one another, and we actually had a lot of fun in this process. And then finally, I want to thank not only the commission staff, including Frank Cardenas, our executive director, who couldn't be here today, Andrea Edelman, who handled the outreach, Andrew Westfall, who was our intrepid line drawer, but also staff members from the city family, the city attorney's office, my former colleagues, the CLA, your chiefs of staff and your district reps who were so important to us in the process of the outreach and making these hearings work, and I want to thank all of them.
And Madam Chair, nice to see you. Thank you, Council President, Mr. Holden. Also on behalf of my 14 colleagues on the LAUSD Commission, I want to thank the city for its support. City staff was extraordinary in getting us what we needed to do, and it was also a very... We had also a terrific effort from LAUSD staff, and these are bodies that don't often have an opportunity to work together, and I thought it actually worked out fine and very well for all of us. I also want to mention that it's always gratifying to see the birth mothers and fathers of the process be proud of their children, which is what I thought I heard from the charter reform commissioners this morning. I'm not sure that school board member Corinste would take the same view, but she was instrumental, I believe, in convincing the commissions to create a similar public commission for the school board process, and you see what you got, and I think it was a terrific experience for all of us. Finally, I agree with John that it wouldn't have been the same without a terrific group of commissioners, which I won't recognize since I know you're about to do that. It was an extraordinary group of people. I also want to mention, as John did, that we got a terrific amount of help from Mary Bell Marina, former Public Works Commissioner of the city, who could not be here today, Kobe King, who handled our outreach, and also Andrew Westfall, who was terrific in running our maps. Thank you very much.
Now for the envelope, please. We have Jackie Dupont Walker and Mr. Dan Garcia. They're the vice chair of the city's redistricting commission, and they should come forward. What we got to do, Madam President, members, is read off the names, and then we will present at will certificates, and go in the back and take photographs right here. The first one is to Mr. Steve Afret, they're all about to read the scene. World-renowned, renowned anthropologist Margaret Mead once said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has." Your service on the redistricting committee would profoundly change the city of Los Angeles for the next 10 years. It was an awesome responsibility to establish new council district boundaries and a fair and judicial manner. Not only have you followed the mandates of the city charter... Not only have you followed the mandates of the city charter, which you have followed the complex directive of the Voting Rights Act, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, City Council, thank you for all you have done in serving our city, not an individual. And this will be presented to each and every member of the commission. I might add that with the public information, Mr. Pacheco, we're going to adopt one hundred percent of what the commission is recommending to us, without any modification, as it should be. Number one. And number two, for those communities of interest, you're never going to make everybody happy at all, and things like this. But they did the best they could, under the circumstances, very trying, and we should never forget the good work that they've done for the city of Los Angeles. And so, Steve Affrett. This is Marsha LeBron, she's from the mayor's appointee. Richard Close from the valley, a very good friend of mine, and he's here. Patricia Cook. Jackie DuPont Walker. And to the president of the city's redistricting committee, commission, my friend John Emerson. And to a man who's given his time from every administration, from planning commission to airport commission, to redistricting commission, and you name the commission, you'll find this guy's name is Dan Garcia. Another young man, I think he worked for the city with us before, his name is Marty Goldman. And the city mayor's appointee, Gary Park. A gentleman that I shared with in the California Legislature, a member of the California State Senate, former member, president of the pro tempore senate, Senator David Roberti. And Ms. Irma Rodriguez. Is that Nelson Serrano? Did I get it right? And through the fireball from the ninth district, where she speaks, everybody listens, Juanita Tate. And to the appointee from the eighth district, Anthony Dickman. And to a lady that I've known for years, when the junior college board trustees were first voted on by the voters many years ago, his first member was Jerry Brown at the time, before he became the governor. Lady ran in that race against him. I was president of the CDC and arranged for her to get the endorsement, and she's been a friend ever since, even before. Irene Tovar. Rana B. Cheraski? Did I get it right? And Turel Fergus. And Timothy Watkins. You're all members, Father Ted, well, this is Ted too. Daniel Weiss. Tyree Wyden. And Bob Wynn. Thank you all once again for a job well valued. Mr. President. Mr. Holden, I think we may be pausing here for a picture of the commissioners, if I understand.
I suspect then the brief recess is in order.
While they're taking their picture, if I may, Mr. President, members of the council, want to recognize the members of the school board redistricting commission, and I think they'll be closer for a picture as well, so we'll recess at that time for a couple more pictures. The president of the commission, Michael Keely. Eric Altretti. Is Alma Martinez here? We'll get this to her. Jonathan Zaslow. Sue Burnside.
Sue Burnside.
She's not here either. Another applause here, Julie Buckner Levy. Probably with Sue. Jane Tacubo. George Cole. Don't see him here. President of the seventh council district, Dennis O'Sullivan. B. Kwaku Durin. Not here. Roberta Lewis. Irma Hopkins. Diana Dixon Davis. Yvette King Bird. And last, and certainly not least, Mr. Garcetti would agree, Amy Wakeland. Mr. Chair, as you mentioned, a brief recess is in order. I think we're going to get a picture of the two commissions and members of the city council while we have the photographer set up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And while we are making reference to schools, may I now take this opportunity to recognize the students from the St. Paul's Lutheran School, all the way from Fullerton, and they are here escorted by Mr. Alan Lutz. Why don't you stand, give them a big round of applause. Thank you very much, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Hall.
Mr. President. Members, if we can come back to order here and proceed with the agenda. Mr. President.
It's amazing what you're bringing through. Because you say it's not made in Spain. So you're getting rid of Lebon? But thank you, when you speak, it's so wonderful because you speak slow. I love it. At everybody.
Members, if we can bring the meeting back to order. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Han, Mr. Rudy Thomas, Mr. LeBonde. Mr. Weiss. Okay, members, thank you very much. Members of the public who are here, thank you very much for your patience. This time I have two speakers on the queue, not sure which item. Ms. Calantra and Mr. Garcetti. Take Mr. Garcetti first.
If we can just reconsider item 31, we had a technical amendment that didn't get in in time.
We have a motion for reconsideration on item number 31. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Item 31 now before us.
Everybody has the amendment 31, it's just a technical amendment.
That has been circulated without objection. Then let's take item 31 as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number...
Fourth with item 31. Next item.
Item number 13 called upon by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, we need to have a staff report on item number 13 relating to DWP regarding the department's debt, stranded debt, and what this represents in terms of comparing it, outstanding stranded debt today with debt four years ago and what was done by the department to reduce that. It's important for the members of council to know and understand that. Department here, Mr. President? Front and center. We put some tables and chairs over there for you. They're going to have to sit on the other side, Mr. President. One point, Mr. President, members, we had an outstanding debt of more than $4 billion of stranded debt for producing energy, plants that we developed. And it turns out that there were some members of the city council and the mayor who wanted to sell off DWP to Edison or some other company that would want to buy it. And Mr. Deaton, those of us who oppose the selling of the DWP to Department of Water and Power, it turns out they were right. And I just think the new members should understand what transpired at that time, what causes not to do that. And of course, history will show that that decision was the right decision and that stranded debt has been substantially reduced. Explain.
I guess if you go back to when the legislation that unleashed competition here in California was put in place, the department was looking at various options to reduce its exposure to stranded debt. One of the things that the department was concerned about was maintaining its own generation and maintaining a fully integrated utility. There was, however, various opinions within the organization and from others outside.
By the way, were you there at the time? Pardon me? Were you working for the department at the time?
Yes, I've been with the department for about 23 years.
That's great.
And there were varying opinions as to whether or not we should retain the generation or whether it would be better just to sell it and monetize the asset and then rely on the marketplace. Having looked at all the facilities that we own, we, on an individual basis, it was decided that the best course of action at that time would be to reduce our costs to the maximum extent possible and put in place a program to pay down our generation debt. And at that time, we had roughly $4.1 billion of generation debt that was outstanding on all of our facilities, including those that we own directly and those that we have contracts in place for. Intermountain Power Project, as well as Palo Verde Nuclear Generating Station that we own through Southern California Public Power Authority. I'm happy to report that we've come a long way and that our generation, our exposure to generation debt, stranded generation debt, has been reduced from $4.1 billion down to...
Mr. Pacheco is not even listening to that, although he'll be around for a while. Mr. Weiss, I don't even understand what you said. After this has been said, go ahead.
I'm happy to report that our generation debt has been reduced from, since 1997, from $4.1 billion down to a little over a billion dollars. And that, in fact, we would be ahead of schedule with respect to our debt-free and '03 goal that was set forth in the action plan that was adopted by this council. Were it not for the fact that we've decided, subsequent to the adoption of the action plan, to invest approximately $1.8 billion into our in-basin generation facilities to bring them in line with all the new technologies that are available for gas-fired facilities and to install...
That's being cleaner burning.
Much cleaner burning.
So that's being environmentally conscious?
That's correct.
And the staff and the council person should pay attention, listen to that. This is very, this is the most critical discussion that we will hold here this week, notwithstanding the fact that we discussed the budget. So carry on.
Okay, so as it stands today, we have embarked on that program and we have expended roughly $650 million. We have a couple of repowering, what we refer to as repowering projects underway. The Valley Generating Station is the one that is the closest to completion. And we've also successfully installed combustion turbines, roughly 300 megawatts of combustion turbines in our in-basin facility, in a location in the in-basin area of LA as well. I think one of the things that was a big issue at the time when the whole divestiture matter came up was the impact on the department and the city with respect to the loss of potential jobs should we decide to shut down the facilities. So another benefit, I think, that we've gained by retaining the facilities is not only the reliability that we had or have, and we're able to avoid the kinds of things that happened in other service territories, that of the investor-owned utilities primarily with the rolling blackouts and the various stages of emergency, but we've also been able to retain high-paying jobs here in the LA area.
Right, you got it. Any comments from you, sir? Right, now, the plants, the generating plants outside of the state of California, U-Town, et cetera, they're using coal, coal?
There are...
Coal burning?
Three, three of them burn coal, one is a nuclear facility.
Okay, and the ones that, in the inner city, in this, you know, area, will be coal, gas, nuclear?
They will be natural gas.
Natural gas. Now, the, so the cost, the direct proportion to the cost of the natural gas, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that fluctuates, doesn't it?
That's correct.
Well, that affect the cost of, to our ratepayers at some later date, even though we paid down the stranded debt and when that money is no longer needed to pay down that debt? Then, of course, would that revert back to the ratepayers in lower rates? How do you anticipate that savings to be expended?
I guess if we were to look forward and assume that...
Mr. President, Mr. President is answering a few questions for me. Mr. President, he's answering a few questions for me, thank you.
If you were to look forward a little bit and you assume that competition is not dead, I guess one of the questions would be, to the extent we're making these investments in the in-basin facilities, would these facilities be competitive? Well, a couple of things. One is that we're cash-funding the investment, so we wouldn't have any stranded debt to concern ourselves with. The second thing is that we would be subject to the fluctuation as we become more reliant on natural gas. We would be subject to the fluctuation in the natural gas prices. And as many of you know, the natural gas prices spiked a couple of years back to levels that we hadn't seen in many, many years. So one of the things that the department is looking, and at present, the department has a frozen rate structure. And so our retail rates are, in effect, frozen. They're very competitive at roughly 9.6 cents per kilowatt hour, about 50 cents, 50% lower than the neighboring investor-owned utility and utilities throughout the state. And so it's imperative for the department, I think, going forward, despite the fact that it has a diversified fuel mix in that we have coal, nuclear, hydro in our mix and have a natural hedge to that extent, it's important for the department to put in place a program, in effect, buying insurance against spike, price spikes in the future on natural gas.
Buying insurance? What do you propose by that?
That would, one of the things that we're considering and the board will be considering today, it's on the agenda, is a, what we call the natural gas ordinance. And what this would allow us to do, if it were to pass and require city council approval, would, to go out into the marketplace on a delegated basis and be able to, within certain parameters and constraints, to either enter into fixed-price natural gas contracts to the extent it makes financial sense to do so. In other words, we don't want to lock in high prices.
Like the deal with Enron. All right, and that's why the members ought to be listening. But carry on.
And, and the second thing is, it allows us to enter into what we'll call financial contracts. And these contracts are, in effect, derivatives. But they aren't derivatives in a negative sense. I think the word derivative has negative connotations when we look to Enron, Orange County Bank, or see another entities that have had some very bad experiences with them. But what we've been able to do in working closely with the chief legislative analyst staff, as well as the CAO and the mayor's office staff, is to put together something that we believe is a program that would allow us to buy financial or enter into financial contracts such as price ceilings. So we can go out and for a small fee, buy a ceiling on the price of natural gas for a period of up to five years within certain constraints. It'll also allow us to enter into what we call price collars that will allow us to maintain the price of natural gas within a certain bandwidth. Those are probably the two key elements of the plan, and it would prohibit us from reversing any of these transactions, which are the types of things that one would probably concern themselves with, because we don't want to get into what I would refer to as the trading business. We're there to buy insurance. So that would not be delegated. We would have to come back for approval if we tried to reverse any of the insurance policies that we put in place. So I think that is a key strategy going forward, especially in light of the fact that as we are attempting to manage our net income, and it's important for us to manage that net income going forward because of the potential of constraining the city transfer and also the potential for having, because of the spike in natural gas prices, to raise our retail rates. That's not something that we want to do, and we want to maintain stability in both the transfer and the retail rates for our customers. So I think that, in a nutshell, I guess what I'm saying is that, that we do have a plan going forward, and we will be asking this council to approve our plan to manage our natural gas prices and our exposure to natural gas. And it is a critical component of what the rating agencies view as, well, let me back up. The department's in the process of being evaluated on the electric side for an upgrade to a double-A bond rating from Standard and Poor's and FISH. As part of that process, one of the elements that they've raised as an issue has to do with how we're managing going forward our exposure to natural gas prices. As we repower the in-basin generation facilities and these facilities become, with newer technology, significantly more efficient, we will begin to generate additional energy from these facilities, and as a result, our natural gas volumes will go up. So what we have expressed to them is that we do have a plan to manage our natural gas prices going forward, and, and that our expectation is that, that we will achieve success in getting it approved within the limits that are set forth in the ordinance.
Thank you for a thorough and complete report on what's been transpiring over the past few years of DWP and why the rates to the ratepayers are being controlled and no blackouts in the city of Los Angeles. It's unfortunate that the chair of the Virginia Finance Committee has more interest in reapportionment than he does in this important issue, because he's going to be around to do... than he does in this important issue, because he's going to be around to deal with this issue. The fact of the matter is that you have to have a control, a management control over spikes of natural gas prices, which you have to bring back to the council, with the council consideration on whether or not we're going to enter into those contracts to buy gas when it fluctuates, and at the same time maintain, with the idea of maintaining the rate, that the ratepayers are paying today with some kind of consistency. So, the members of the council who still be here, and I'm sure I'm one of the ones who will not, ought to know exactly what you presented to them today, and I respectfully request that you put a report in, give it to Mr. Pacheco, who was busy at the time, and hear a word you said regarding this information, because his ratepayers are going to be the one to benefit or suffer from whatever we do or not do as relates to controlling the spikes and the cost of natural gas. And that's important, because we're going to shift to an in-basin from the coal burning in Utah. Once that's all done, sometime there, they may say, "Let's not pollute our air anymore." But our stranded debt will be substantially reduced, maybe down to zero hopefully in the near future, and that savings can come back to the ratepayers in the city rather than expended in other areas. And we want to thank Mr. Deaton. He's worth his weight in gold, and I'll sit down, Mr. President will stand up again. Mr. Deaton, worth his weight in gold for stopping the selling of the DWP to Edison, those other companies which you're aware of, and a few members of the council who fought like heck to make sure that that did not happen, and I'm proud to say I'm one of them. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, Mr. Burton.
Yes, I'm glad the presentation was made, and I think, obviously, this is a very important step for us to get into clean burning fuels. I just wonder if the department is also looking at the energy, trash-to-energy conversion, which has been suggested by the council, that a study be done recently. That is something that would free our landfills from putting pollutants into our ground for the future generations. And also, another important fuel that is being used, and that's the fuel cell, the hydrogen fuel cell. And I think that both of those very important types of fuel ought to be considered for the future, because of the clean air aspect, number one, and because of sanitation and health problems, for another. So, while the natural gas is important, and I presume, are you continuing, planning on continuing to convert the two plants that were coal burning to natural gas that are in the LA Basin, Scattered Good and Hanson Dam? Those are on the market for natural gas, is that correct?
All of our in-basin facilities, we, we used to have, our in-basin facilities used to run on fuel oil.
I understand that.
And they are all, now have been converted to natural gas.
All of them?
All of them.
Are there any that are not, that are idle today?
There are a couple of units, well, depending on the weather and the demand for electricity from time to time, we do have plants that are idle, but there are none really on a layup, in a layup mode.
These that are potentially also oil-burning today, that you use in emergency situations, would be ideal candidates for conversion to trash-to-energy. And by the way, if you haven't talked to the AQMD lately, they have agreed that this can be done with the proper scrubbers, such as Long Beach has, and other areas in Europe and so forth. And if you want to get an example of a fuel cell-type generation, the Air Quality Management District has a large unit which powers about 50 percent of their energy over in Diamond Bar. So those are also areas that should be considered. But I want to say that one of the most important assets that we have, and what got us through when other portions of the state were having trouble, was the fact that we have our own independent water and power source. We have the best water supply in the state, probably in the country, and I won't go beyond that, but might even go way well beyond that. A lot of people don't appreciate, they think they've got to drink a bottle of water, but our water supply from the Califor, from the Los Angeles Aqueduct and the Sierra, Nevada Mountains is probably one of the finest that you'll get anywhere. And as far as the electricity, we've never really had to, you know, we really never had a situation here where we're in danger of blackouts as the rest of the, as the rest of the state did. So, the DWP is an important asset, I want to commend him, and I think you're doing the right thing by looking at the future and protecting us as far as prices are concerned. Just don't forget those other two future sources which may even be better and less expensive for the ratepayers in the future.
We certainly will not.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, first of all, Mr. Holden's correct. I will be here after he leaves, but I think he's incorrect about one thing. I don't think it's the last we're going to hear from you, Mr. Holden. I think even if you're off the council, you will still be here, and you will still be a voice in Los Angeles, so I don't think you're going to abandon the ship just because you're not an elected official.
Public comment, period.
You know, if, we'll pre-fill out your public comment cards, Mr. Holden.
Thank you very much. Other members wishing to be recognized. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 13. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 14, call Special Counsel member Holden.
Mr. Holden.
I can stay there, and first of all, I want to commend Ms. Galanter and Mr. Padilla for putting the motion in, making the request that the Department of Water and Power give us a status report on the finances, and they've listed them in this report, which you, I hope you have a copy of it. You can respond to each of those that's been requested by Ms. Galanter, Ms. Padilla, Mr. Padilla, and then we'll notify, because they're important information that we should know about. Would you proceed, sir?
Yes, is, this is the...
The status of money owned, the development, etc., etc.
Okay. You want to just walk through it at a high level? As you know, the cornerstone of the department's action plan was to reduce or eliminate all of its generation debt by 2003. As I had mentioned previously, we are currently at roughly $1 billion, and were it not for the fact that we were making, we are making roughly 180 million, or excuse me, $1.8 billion investment in our in-basin facilities, we would, in fact, be ahead, way ahead of schedule. We would have roughly 400 million of bonds left to pay off. Again, our rates are, on average, 9.6 cents per kilowatt-hour, which is roughly half that of the investor-owned utilities, so our rates are very, very competitive. We do have a double-A minus bond rating from Moody's Investor Service, and an A-plus bond rating from Standard and Poor's and Fitch, and our hope is that we're able to achieve an upgrade to double-A status with all three bond rating agencies. As far as our receivables from the independent system operator and the power, California Power Exchange, as you know, the California Power Exchange had declared bankruptcy, and the independent system operator was, in effect, insolvent because of credit issues. The department, approximately one year ago, was owed $180 million for surplus electricity sales that it made to both of these entities, and since that time, we've received roughly $10 million on payment, and we're currently owed about $170 million. Southern California Edison Company has made its payments, paid all the amounts in arrears to both the Power Exchange and the independent system operator, but the department hasn't received its share of those funds to date. My understanding is that, at such time that the bankruptcy of Pacific Gas and Electric is resolved, that the department would receive its funds that SCE has transmitted to these two entities, and my assumption would be that we would also receive the funds that are due us from Pacific, indirectly from Pacific Gas and Electric. As far as policies regarding the department's power sales, as you know, there was a bit of controversy over the last, I'll say, a year, year and a half ago or so, because it was unclear to many as to what the department's policy was with respect to making wholesale sales. And at the end of the day, the department had a policy, it was in a time period where the state was experiencing rolling blackouts and various stages of emergencies, electrical emergencies, that the department had adopted a California-first policy. This was in the December of 2000 time period. And under that policy, the department offered any and all excess capacity and energy that it had available to the state first, to other entities within the state, and then, if either of those two groups did not need the electricity, then we would sell it to third parties. Our policy at the time was to charge a price of cost plus a markup of 15 percent. And in the 15 percent, the department believed was a reasonable return on the energy that we sold. My understanding, as it is today, the, since that time, natural gas prices, which was one of the main drivers that resulted in spiraling electricity prices, was skyrocketing electricity prices, have come down significantly. For the department, we paid as much as $59, $60 per million BTU in the December 2000 timeframe, which was about the peak of the pricing timeframe, and prices came down three or four months later to $2, a little over $2 per million BTU. As a result, the, there's been, it's been a relatively cool summer this past year, and with gas prices down, the demand for electricity has been down, in part due to the state's efforts to incent customers to conserve, which has been successful, coupled with a general downturn in economic activity. And so, as a result, the department is not making the level of wholesale sales, which were record sales last year, roughly 950 million, far exceeding any other prior year that it had made in the prior year. And currently, I think, our budgeted level, and will probably, is roughly 190 million, just to give you an idea how much less we are budgeting, and I think we're probably going to come in closer to 100 million or 10 percent of what we sold in that year. Our plan, I think, this summer is to present to our board our pricing policy as it will be going forward through the summer period. As it stands now, the department is making wholesale sales to the extent it can make a margin on those sales, but to date, our sales have been very sluggish for the reasons that I've just discussed. As far as public benefits monies are concerned, as you probably know, the department was mandated to allocate roughly 2.85 percent of its revenues to fund various public benefits programs under AB 1890. And within the law, it states specifically the nature of the programs that the department can't expend funds on. The largest component of the public benefits spending the department has would be the subsidies that we provide to low-income and for lifeline subsidy purposes. This expenditure amounts to roughly $25 million a year, and the total amount that is available, it changes from year to year, is roughly 60 million, so this accounts for almost half of that amount. The balance of the funds are allocated between research, development, and demonstration-type projects, as well as energy efficiency and various other types of projects. For example, we installed a fuel cell at the Department of Water and Power. We have installed microturbines at the Department of Water and Power using public benefits monies. In addition to that, we had been receiving over the last year or two several grants. The largest that I can recall was roughly 10 million, and so, for energy efficiency-related investments. And the department currently is roughly, I think, $27 million behind its spending schedule for public benefits programs. And the reason that we're behind is, two or three reasons. One, we received these grants that we hadn't anticipated, but we had applied for, and that gave us a windfall of funds that could be used for energy efficiency. Two, it took time after the law was passed for us to ramp up and get, and decide what types of programs that we wanted to implement and to get these programs going. The third thing is that, at the time that we had adopted the program, our understanding was that the funding would begin at the beginning of our fiscal year, which would have been July 1st of 1998, the timeframe in which our public benefits programs began. And then, more recently, it was determined that we should go back to January 1st of 98, so we had additional funds that we had to allocate for public benefit purposes. As far as cash for conservation is concerned, at one point in time, the department was looking at, it was, it came at a time period when the state was experiencing the severe electricity crunch, and were considering various conservation-related programs and alternative programs to educate the public and incent the public to conserve electricity. And the department similarly looked at various options that it could use to implement similar programs, and it had recommended, at one point in time, a program. That program was never implemented, and in hindsight, it was, we were actually fortunate because our customers actually had conserved, just because it was the right thing to do, and because of the emphasis that the state had placed on putting out materials, asking folks to conserve. So we have actually enjoyed a fair amount of conservation within our service territory as our customers have backed off their usage, also, we believe, to help other folks in different parts of the state that were experiencing electricity shortages at the time. I covered the debt piece. The, as far as the department's staffing is concerned, we had hit a high of roughly 11,000 personnel, and I'll say that was back in 1993, 1994 timeframe. And from that timeframe forward, we had, we had began to tightly manage new hiring and put hiring freezes in place, for example, and only backfilled critical positions. But in addition to that, we've had two staff reduction programs that were very successful, and we were able to achieve a reduction from 11,000 personnel in roughly the 1993, 94 timeframe, down to 6,700 personnel after the latest staff reduction program a few years ago. One of the issues that came up with respect to the latest program a couple of years ago was that it was not real targeted or focused, and it was generally offered to all department employees to encourage people either to leave early and receive a cash bonus, or to receive some retirement incentives in the form of years of service or age, so that people could retire. And because of the unfocused nature of that program, there were many positions within the organization that, where people had vacated or left the company, but they were critical position, positions that needed to be backfilled. For example, in the customer service area, we had lost folks in that area, and we hadn't planned to target that area, but we were required subsequently to backfill. In addition to that, because of various new programs, such as the public benefits-related programs, we've had to hire additional staff so that we could get these programs moving in the right direction, and such that they would have adequate staffing to carry the program out into the future. In addition to that, what we began to do, positions that we had contractors that were coming in and performing work on behalf of the department, we began converting those to, in effect, full-time employees that were eligible for the full benefits package the department offers. And so we've hired, so we've converted contractors to employees, and in addition to that, we had what we called civil service daily rated employees, and others that we, in effect, had employed with us on a year-round basis, but we could hire and release them at will. And if you looked at the level of folks that we had hired over time, you could see that there was a core group that were always there and were, in effect, like full-time employees. So we've also, are in the process of finalizing the conversion... So we've also are in the process of finalizing the conversion of those folks to full-time employees. So if you look at our staffing levels today, we went from the high of eleven thousand down to roughly sixty-seven-hundred, and I think right now we're at roughly seventy, about seventy-six-hundred. And again, that difference has to do with roughly three or four hundred backfilling of critical positions and the balanced conversions and new programs.
Can, I know you have a lot in this very substantive report, I'm sure the questions that members may have after having reviewed it, we'd appreciate it. We have one member wishing to be heard, spoken quite at length, so if I can ask you to sort of wrap it up here.
Mr. President, I just want to compliment the department for thorough, complete report, sharing information with the members of the council and the public that they will need later on in order to respond to requests made by the department to, in order to codify some recommendations the department will come and make of the council. They already said that in this presentation, that that's what they plan to do in terms of maybe controlling or buying gas to prevent spiking and prevent, reduce the likelihood of having to raise the rates on ratepayers in order to make those kind of things happen. So I just want to compliment you for a job well done. I see here that we have a reserve fund that has been raised to three-hundred-and-fifty billion dollars according to this report. Once again, Ms. Galanter and Ms. Bedea, making this request, the department report to the council has been very, very significant, very important information that we didn't know initially. I'm not going to raise any other question other than to say that, as you talked about, the sales of surplus energy to the state or others if the state didn't need it, but the transmission line, did we make money on the transmission, using that transmission line, yes or no? What portion of that was due to the sale, the use of transmission lines? What portion of that surplus was due to the sale of surplus energy? It's information I'd like to have, but I won't take the council time to have you respond to that today, but maybe somebody in my office or you can share that information with me personally, so we can have it. And you can distribute whatever you give to me to the members of the council, so they will have it. You will be coming back, talking to them again on specific issues at this definite time periods, in order to allow you guys to go forward to do what you have to do for the good of ratepayers, and you've done a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, thank you for that report. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number seventeen calls special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden.
President, members, this came out of your committee. I think the staff, CLA, probably want to report on this, as to why you supported this piece of legislation, and then I'll speak to the issue because I think it imposes a hardship on certain individuals who would not otherwise be gainfully employed.
The item before you is brought by a resolution by Councilman Weiss to support AB-2815. This bill would require and would express the intent of the legislature that drivers and owners of ground transportation carriers at airports be subjected to the licensing and review procedures that the PUC conducts. The airport, the resolution conditions a support upon strengthening amendments to the bill, which would say that a full criminal history background check be required, and two, would prohibit anyone who has committed a serious criminal offense, such as a felony, from being able to get a license. In the event that this bill is not successful, which appears to be the case right now, it has not even been referred to a policy committee, therefore it has missed the opportunity under the deadlines to be enacted this year, the recommendation from committee, as recommended by our office, is to sponsor similar legislation in the next two-year session, 2003, 2004.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
President, members, I would be opposed to any legislation that would, I don't mind a review of each individual potential employee for working associated or related transportation related to airlines or airports. That's fine. But for these low-level paying jobs, checking baggage, and so on, most people have gained a job for the first time in their life. Some people come from the inner city, and because of circumstance, they may have been involved in some kind of a crime, paid their debts to society, they want to turn their lives around. You're going to just upfront because they've been, felony, maybe marijuana, felony could be almost anything that's minor, someone being overcharged is most often happened to inner-city individuals, they get them into the system. And once they're in the system, they never get out, which means that they're just dead if you don't give them an opportunity to provide for themselves and their families. They go back onto the streets, commit crimes, and go back to jail. As president, members, it's just unreasonable for, to be living in a just society, to say to an individual who paid their debts to society that you can't get a job, no matter how small, how small-paying that job is, transporting checked luggage. I don't mind to have the review by PUC, but then on a case-by-case basis, look at the whole person, look at the individual. You can amend legislation to do that and say, yes, they had a previous problem, yes, they've turned their life around, and yes, they should be gainfully employed. But to say absolutely no because of what happened to some kid eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty, years ago, I can never support legislation like that. And therefore, it should never see the light of day, and it has not left the policy committee. There's no need to waste the city's time having them introduce another piece of legislation where we know in advance it's going to die unless you amend it in a way where it's going to be acceptable to the majority of members of the Senate and Assembly. They have a heart up there. They show compassion up there for those who can't help themselves, and they will never ever do what we do here, is vote for a piece of legislation like this unless it's amended to provide an opportunity for those individuals to explain themselves and be given consideration in a special circumstance. With a bill like that, I could go along with it. Otherwise, I'm voting no, or even under request to support legislation to try and get somebody to carry it. If they carry it, it's going to die, as it should.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be recognized? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the committee report. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, two noes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number eighteen calls special inasmuch as there are cards from the public.
Council calls forward at this time is Sylvia Lynn Hawkins on item eighteen. Ms. Hawkins?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sylvia Aleni Hawkins, and I represent the Israel Housing Service, and I am also a licensed school bus driver, and on consideration concerning license and documents, especially what they just got to speaking about concerning the Department of Water and Power and concerning the rolling blackout that happened in December of 2000. I am convinced that these are blow-up prices, which is against the public. It's a way of escape of how to get out of debt, which they are charging us devil prices. And I also have a question as to how do, how are, how is Department of Water and Power getting out of debt? Because if they're charging the people extra money, they're only, is trying to get rid of their problem, their debts, which is not helping Ellison. I am also convinced concerning documents of identification, license, stolen license, stolen identification pictures, that can be false, and yet they still can report that they are a driver, whether it's with LAX, Unified, or dealing with the City of Los Angeles. I am still convinced that we are in debt as a government, we are in danger of beginning of World War III. We, as a government, must be prepared, even with transportation in and out of this city.
I'd like you to conclude, please.
Thank you very much, I will conclude. Again, concerning rolling blackouts, are we prepared for, if there come a rolling blackout, if all the lights go out and the war has begun, how are we going to take care of ourselves if there's no electricity? He's trying to get more money so he can get out of debt. Department of Water and Power are in debt. Ellison is down, and Iran, they is cursed.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
So we need protection from the government concerning, how do we protect ourselves if the World War III start?
Thank you for your testimony. This concludes public comment.
And there is a blackout.
On item number eighteen. Thank you very much. Mr. Pacheco.
Colleagues, I introduce this motion, which I have titled "The No Scarlet Letter for Immigrant Community." As you know, there's a process that the governor and a task force are going through in terms of defining under which circumstances and what parameters will individuals, immigrants, who are going through the process of becoming legal residents and legal citizens, will receive driver's license. And in that process, there was a, someone floated the idea that we should have a special marking on the driver's license of an immigrant who went through the process of becoming a citizen, or who is going through the process of becoming a legal resident or citizen. I believe that we know that in the 1940s, when the Jewish community in Germany was asked to wear a Star of David, and it was wrong then, that when we look at the Scarlet Letter example in literature, that the whole idea of marking someone just based on one factor of who they are is inappropriate and would mislabel and misrepresent an individual. There's no need to summarily categorize all immigrants as a risk or a threat, or in any way a threat to public safety. And so at this point, I was just simply asked that we send a message to the governor and the State of California Task Force that they not include a special mark indicating that someone who has gone through the legal process of becoming a citizen or resident, or is going through the legal process of becoming a citizen or resident, must be marked in any way on their driver's license. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Burnson.
Well, I think this needs to have some questions answered. I don't have any problem with what Mr. Pacheco said. If somebody is undergoing the process, they're already in the process, and they're here legally, and they're undergoing the process of either going through legalization, even if they entered illegally, because there is a process that has been provided for that, and if they're doing that, and if they're applying for citizenship, that's fine. I don't think they should be required to do that. But if we're talking about, about not doing it for people who are here, perhaps, you know, as, I don't know if you're aware of this or not, Nick, but anybody, and I won't just boil it down to one area of the world, but any person can walk into the Department of Motor Vehicles and lay in a driver's license. And, you know, we're in a situation today, security-wise, because of the threat to our, from terrorism and other things, I think we have to be very cautious about the steps that we take and what we automatically wave off as being, you know, discriminatory. I appreciate the fact of the comparison you made between the Jews with Hitler being made to wear yellow armbands, that was a little different situation. Those people were already citizens of those countries, and they were discriminated on because of their race and their religion. Here, we're talking about a situation of people who enter the country, and, you know, I'm very compassionate about that. I don't, I feel that everybody comes here, my parents came here to make a better life, they came from Europe, and I understand that, and it's, you know, it's the American dream to have a better life, to have a home, and so forth. But I think if we're talking about people who are under the process, and that's all we're talking about, then I can support your amendment. If we're talking about just granting it, you know, to anybody, I think the people, I think the one weakness we have with the DWP today and the social security system is nobody has to present anything to show that they're here really in a friendly manner or really should be here or are supposed to be here. We just grant it automatically, and that's a problem.
Let me answer your questions, Mr. Burnson. First of all, AB-60 and Assemblymember Sidio have been working very hard to make sure that this is a limited scope in terms of who can receive a driver's license, that background checks will occur, that the individual must be in the legal process of becoming a resident or citizen.
Okay, if that's the case, I can support it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? I just hope that the DWP will take the proper measures to ensure in the future that they don't issue just anybody a driver's license.
Mr. Reyes.
Council President, colleagues, in our report from the Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, it states fairly clearly that this would amend the state law to allow immigrants in the process of applying for legal status, or immigrants who have filed a petition for application with an immigration California driver's license. I think this is a critical step, but council members, if we look towards the future, we need to emphasize that we are an international city. We do have various economies going through the City of Los Angeles, and we need to understand that the more inclusive we become within those legal parameters, the healthier our economy will be, and the better off we'll be for our quality of life. So I think this is a very constructive way of making sure that we continue to build up the health of our economy, and to make people more inclusive, to participate in all the services, as well as to support the services through the tax base. So it's a win-win. So I encourage your support. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. My concern is that the law enforcement community, and I see some representatives in the LAPD here, are you here to address this issue? If you could, please come forward. Captain, I know you're shaking your head no, but there are people behind you acknowledging. No, he was shaking no, he's not here for that. Captain McCarthy is here for something else. He's here to enjoy the council meeting. But I'd like to hear from the Los Angeles Department, your concerns and issues on this. I do support the measure with the restrictions, I just want to make sure that our law enforcement, LAPD, is on board with this. Do you have any suggestions or ideas regarding it?
I'm Captain Charles Roper from Uniform Support Division of the LAPD. As you are aware, our Special Order 20, an individual's immigration or naturalization status is not an issue with our department. We deal with behaviors. So if an individual, maybe driving with Illinois driver's license, we don't really care as long as they're not violating our vehicle code, and the issues and their behaviors is not in a violation of any of our laws, ordinances, et cetera. So we don't really have a position on marking the license per se, because we don't enforce, we enforce our laws, but we don't enforce, we don't, a person's naturalization status is not an issue with us at that time.
Captain, would you think that an individual who's involved in criminal activity would be going through the process to become a citizen and go through the process of paying the license, or just run amok and do as they wish without legitimizing themselves?
Well, it depends on how good the system is. I would be hard-pressed to say that, you know, as a blanket statement, that someone, you know, a dedicated criminal or whatever would not take that step if he in fact knew the system was ironclad that they could be captured, in the sense that if you'll remember, going back to the issue of Virginia driver's licenses that were obtained fraudulently for some of the nineteen hijackers, even before that, Tim McVeigh and Terry Nichols had South Dakota driver's licenses that they had obtained fraudulently. It just depends on their level of sophistication and their willingness to take a risk. If the system is sound, as Councilman Burnson is talking about, and that system can be counted upon to weed out these people, then I think anyone that would be in a, of a criminal bent that would be taking it, trying to get a license, would be exposing themselves to disclosure.
Okay. Lieutenant, do you have any comments on it?
I support Captain Roper's position on that without a problem.
Well, that's a good lieutenant's position to take.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. LaBanche.
Mr. President, members of council, I just wonder, what does the Highway Patrol think? Do you know the law enforcement? And you know, the law enforcement, we discussed this issue as it relates to this very important document.
I don't know specifically what the CHP's policy is as it relates to aliens in the community. I don't believe that they enforce the naturalization laws.
No, I know, but as far as the tool, just to, as far as, because they're the operators of the state highways.
Well, yes, because to get a license, you have to have a basic competency to operate a vehicle on the highway, and that's one of the, one of the issues that they are concerned with, as are we. The process to get a license, you just don't merely apply for it, you have to test for it, you have to do a proper.
And Reyes, I just was listening to your remarks earlier. I know there's a problem. If you go out to 7th Street and right now on Westlake Avenue, and you see people make this little sign here, they want to sell you something, you know, and it's usually a car, you know, and I want to make sure, and I don't know if there's other parts of the city that have that impact where people are violating. I think what's great about this is that we're bringing people in. We're bringing people in to establish the proper way government should operate, whether it's identification, or whether it's vehicle code, et cetera, et cetera. But all the illegal sales that I've seen on streets of people selling documents concerns me, although I absolutely welcome every single person from the face of the earth here to live a good life and to follow the laws of this city and this state. And the one concern I want to ask, did anyone get any input from other agencies on this?
Michael Karsh from the Legislative Analyst Office. The advice that I got from the Author's Office this morning is that while the bill, as you may know, has passed the legislature, it has been pulled back for negotiations between law enforcement groups and the governor and Assemblymember Sadio. The particular issue that was raised by Mr. Pacheco in this motion is already off the table. There is going to be no emblazoned symbol on the driver's license that this person is an immigrant-seeking citizenship. There are other issues that are being worked out. One of them is the implementation of it and the extent of a background check. Rest assured, Councilman Labange, that the, that law enforcement is working with the governor's office on this at the time, and they have another bill ready to go once the agreements to the amendments are made.
Great, so that's real important, that there is that process, there is that dialogue, there is that relationship that takes place, because they're the people who are doing the work when someone is troubled, when someone's troubled on the highway, and they come up and they need the proper identification for all the other reasons. So I just want to say I'm going to support this, and I want to make sure that all agencies of law enforcement, both the Los Angeles Police Department, and the California Highway Patrol, and others are well and working to make sure this works right and makes sense for everybody.
Mr. Pacheco.
Colleagues, I just want to share with you that one of the safety nets that we have in this whole process is that these individuals are only going to be allowed to even apply for DMV license, once they've identified themselves to the federal government, once they have gone and are going through the process of the INS and the federal government to become legalized citizens and residents. That's a rigorous process. The federal government, the INS, Department, the Federal Department of Justice, I'm sure, are all carefully monitoring all applicants for citizenship and residency. So I believe that that is one of our safety valves in this whole process. And I liked what the captain, was it captain? Roper, said about the fact that when you're doing your job, you deal with the person's conduct, not what they look like, or what their, the markings they may have, but how they conduct themselves. I believe as a former prosecutor, that that's exactly what we, our laws are governed towards, not what people look like, or how they dress, or what their thoughts may be, but exactly what their conduct is. So I appreciate that you have consistently put up, put forward our basic philosophy of how we're going to deal with people, and that's what this motion is about, is judge people on their conduct, let's not start labeling people just because they happen to be immigrants in this country.
Mr. Reyes.
Councilman Labange, I appreciate your pointing out that whole scenario around MacArthur Park, it probably upholds the need to have officers there 24/7. The reason why we have that activity is because, like in all populations, all communities, you haven't even break the law. And if we had a stronger presence of officers there 24/7 around MacArthur Park, that would alleviate that situation. But my true focus here is for those individuals who are in the process, who are trying to get their license, and who right now are being penalized, not being able to get to work, get to schools, sustain their families, because of these complications and the backlog of the INS. And so labeling them does not help in terms of our ability to be more inclusive, to have a healthy economy, a healthy community. So I appreciate the officer's points of view, but I just want to echo what my colleagues are saying about the conduct. The bottom line is how do we get our city to become one city in respecting every person, regardless of who they are, what they believe in, and all of the good stuff? So thank you so much.
Mr. Zain.
Just one other item I wanted to add to this regarding law enforcement, where I spent 33 years of my life, is when you come in contact with an individual, who, legal or illegal, if they have no identification, what the officer needs to do to try and establish identification versus the person having legitimate identification, and how that can be verified from the field to make sure it's authentic, to verify if there's any warrants or warrants or whatever on the individual. So what I see, from the perspective of law enforcement, that it would assist the field officers and detectives in carrying out their responsibilities versus an individual who they come in contact with who has no identification whatsoever, and how are you going to determine who that person is? And how are you going to conduct an investigation? How are you going to complete a crime report? Can you comment on that?
Without identification, and if there's, if we feel the need that we have to identify the person, it is a rather onerous process. We have to, quite frankly, about the only way we can get, figure out how, who they are is through their fingerprints, and if they're on file. So if an individual has good information, the process becomes very quick, in the sense of our running them for warrants and warrants and finding out exactly if in fact they are who they say they are. So possession of a California driver's license, which is a breeder document, which also provides access to other documents, is very important.
And you can, from the field, verify that license, if it's a valid license?
Yes. If it's, if it's on file and in the system as a valid license, yes, we can.
So if there's a fictitious license that someone purchases?
That's another issue, and at that point, they're actually, they have no identification. They're in possession of fictitious license, and we take care of it in a different manner.
Then they would be arrested in subsequent process. So in essence, it will assist law enforcement in carrying out their responsibilities.
Well, it will help, because, you know, having a valid license is a good starting point.
Okay, thank you.
Would not be actual placement of their legal or illegal status on the driver's license, because that would have no bearing on the issue.
No bearing at all. And one more comment about insurance. Can you obtain insurance in California without a license?
No.
So the hit-and-run rate, some of it contributed by, attributed to people who don't have a license. This may help remedy that situation also, where they would be able to get insurance and comply with the regulations. So the innocent person who gets hit won't sit there and try to carry the bill to repair the damages and medical expenses. My time is up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zain. On a resolution to be recognized, seeing none, we do have the report before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on the council's agenda.
The council calls for it at this time.
I have something to say about some people of my race that there's something special about. When I was young, I broke my two front teeth on a monkey bar in New York City, in the Bronx. They were unusual. Some black people have unusual front teeth. When I was young, my teacher made the whole class look at me because she had never seen teeth like my teeth. I've seen three other girls in New York City with the same thing. One, two younger, one older. We have the same figure, same everything. We have the same features in the face, including the unusual teeth. It's a unique feature in our race. It pretty much looks something like this. This way, in a square pattern. It's a very pretty feature. And I've always dreamt of trying to help those girls, you know, because they might break theirs. And they were pretty. It's just pretty to look at.
Ma'am, if I can ask you to contain your comments to matters within our jurisdiction.
Do you think that's anything special?
It's something that has to be within the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles.
I heard that I could speak. I just, you know, somebody called my name.
You may speak on matters within our jurisdiction now.
Some black people have unusual front teeth. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
To housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those motions shall be posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused for city business, May 29th, to arrive at 11:00 a.m. A motion is required.
Mr. Labange moves. Ms. Hahn is excused.
That clears the desk for closed session.
In conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. I ask the guards to please clear the chambers. Welcome back into open session. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number 27A, settlement in the case of Vargas et al. versus the city of Los Angeles et al., and that's in the amount of $350,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please.
Next item is 27B, and that settlement in the case of Carrasco et al. versus the city of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of $450,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved as well. Forthwith.
Item 32A is an authorization for the city attorney to expend $500,000 to permit a posting, and that's in the case of Leonard Robinson versus Jeffrey Nolte et al.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith.
And 32B is settlement in the case of Dapron Cross et al. versus Martin Rodriguez et al., and that's in the amount of $212,500.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith. Next item.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Are there any announcements? Any announcements? If not, please rise for adjourning motions. Members of the council, members of the public, and those watching at home, it is a sad day in the city of Los Angeles, as many of you certainly know by now, just by taking a look at this morning's newspaper or watching the news. Jerry Dunphy, one of the most recognizable and popular news anchors in Los Angeles, has passed away after more than four decades of being not only on television, but in our homes and in our hearts. We were all saddened to hear last week that he had suffered a heart attack and was hospitalized since Wednesday, and he passed away yesterday evening. Quoted a quote from Joel Salzman, Associate Dean of the USC Annenberg School of Communication, "Ankers come and go, but Jerry Dunphy is a Los Angeles institution." And his family also acknowledged that he served as a beacon of truth and guidance in our ever-changing world. Just a couple of highlights from his life's accomplishments. In 1993, he had received the Academy of Television Arts and Sciences Los Angeles Area Governor's Award, which was part of the local Emmys. He was one of the first local newsmen to report from Vietnam in 1966. In 1979, he was the first to conduct an extensive live television interview with former President Richard Nixon after President Nixon left office. But he was also known beyond his local anchor duties, having appeared in numerous films as well, and having inspired the character Ted Baxter on the TV comedy Mary Tyler Moore. Originally born in Milwaukee and attending the University of Wisconsin, Jerry Dunphy became certainly a part of Los Angeles, and people from throughout the region will surely miss him. All members. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I join with you in the, joining in memory of Jerry Dunphy. Jerry was a dear friend, and we spent a lot of time together, at dinner, at receptions, people's homes, and he was always the joy of the event, and always a special kind of a guy. I've seen Jerry many times in my life, but never a time when he was not smiling or saying something complimentary about someone. Even if the news on TV turned out to be a bad story, he would find a way to show some good light on it. I don't think that we'll never have, ever have another person like Jerry, and therefore he'll always be remembered, certainly in my heart. Every time I would see him, he'd say, "How you doing, big guy?" And I've seen him dance, and when the music starts, eight o'clock in the evening, he's still dancing until nine, 11, 12 in the night. The guy had so much energy. He always kept going and always kept smiling, and my friends that I know well, and I will miss Jerry Dunphy. It was very painful for me to watch the news last night and, and to see them make and run stories about his career, and I was, wow, they only do that when certain things happen, and it was a real shock for me. And Jerry, you're the man. We'll always remember you and love you wherever you are. In heaven. You bet. That's what his sons, that's what his kids said. "My father is in heaven," as I said, read the subscript last night. And truly, he is. Mr. President, members, we also want to join in memory of a passing of Art Flores. He's the cousin of my dear friend and former council member Mike Hernandez. Mr. Flores was 50 years old at the time of his passing. He lived in Fremont, California. Services will take place later this week in Fremont, and Mr. Hernandez will carry the adjournment motion there, present them on the half of the entire city council.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Hahn, then Ms. Calandra.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. I just, too, want to add my bit of sorrow at the passing of Jerry Dunphy. I was thinking, just from his, his statement that he made every single night, from the desert to the sea, to all of Southern California, it was just in those words, he had the ability to really connect the entire region, those who watched that newscast every night, and he had a way of making us all feel connected. So besides his family, he certainly leaves a lot of loyal fans who literally let him into their living rooms every single night. I ask that you would join me, colleagues, in adjourning today in the memory of Antonio and Maria Lucero, who were longtime residents of Wilmington. Many of you may have seen it on the news or read it in the newspaper. Mr. and Mrs. Lucero were killed in a tragic automobile crash along Interstate 15, just north of Barstow. And also killed in this horrific accident were the Luceros' daughter, Yolanda Flores, 48, her husband, and two friends. Antonio and Maria were married 54 years, raised their family in Wilmington. This family consists of six sons, three daughters, 32 grandchildren, and 21 great-grandchildren. While they were parishioners of the Holy Family Catholic Church in Wilmington, because of the, the amount of family members that were killed and those who would want to attend, the funeral mass will be held one week from today at St. Margaret Mary Church in Lomita, as this is a larger as this is a larger church. And one of the sons of the Lucero family, Gilbert Lucero, is a staff member at that church. The funeral service will be for all four of the Lucero family. They will be missed greatly, as one of their granddaughters said, "They were the heart and soul of the family, and they can't imagine going on without them." It's truly a tragedy for that family and for the entire community of Wilmington. I ask that we also adjourn this afternoon in the memory of Mrs. Rosa Bell McCarberry, a native of Oklahoma but a longtime resident of the City of Los Angeles. Mrs. McCarberry was the widow of Los Angeles Fire Department Assistant Fire Chief Reginald W. McCarberry, who passed away in the department while on active duty. She was also the mother of Dennis McCarberry, who is the Public Information Director for the Port of Los Angeles. Dennis and his, and his wife Lena are both very active in the community fairs in our harbor area. She was in turn made second next to her husband in Forest Lawn. She had three grandchildren, eight great-grandchildren, and two great-great-grandchildren, and will be very much missed by family and friends.
Ms. Calandra.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I have two. I'd like to ask first that if, that we adjourn in memory of Senator Dills, who was one of the longer-serving members of the state legislature. I didn't meet Senator Dills until he'd been there a very long time, and his district was rather drastically changed. His, his office was best known for its ability to get things done overnight. I have never seen a constituent operation as efficient as the Dills office ran. Every time we had a city constituent call us with something, some problem that involved the state, the quickest way to get it done was to call Dills's office, and it got done. He was, in his later years, actually in his earlier years, he represented a district that was more in the South Bay and had a lot of oil interests in it, and had something like a zero record from the League of Conservation Voters. They moved his district north, he started to take in the upper South Bay, Playa del Rey, the Marina, and Venice, and all of a sudden, lo and behold, Ralph Dills got 100% from the League of Conservation Voters, and his description of this, to those who expressed some surprise, was, "You know, my job is to represent my district," and that's what he did in every conceivable way. He was, in, I believe he was 90 or 92 when he died, and I'm sorry I've left the list of details, I'll have to give those to the clerk later, but he was really quite an interesting character, and in an era of term limits, in one of his last elections, he was challenged by a man much younger than he, who threatened to make a campaign out of the fact that Mr. Dills was too old to do public service, and Dills, to his great credit, put billboards up all the way, all over the place that said, "In effect, old enough to know better," and won more election by a very large margin because he really represented his district. So I think his passing is notable, it's really the end of an era, almost the end of the era. I'd also, closer to home, I'd also like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Kenneth Hayfley, who died a couple of weeks ago at the other side of the country, but, whose son, Mark Hayfley, I think many of you know. Mr. Hayfley is survived by Mark and his brother Fred, by the senior Mr. Hayfley's wife, and by Fred's two children.
Ms. Holden.
Just wanted to say that we did the adjourn in memory of Senator Dills, and I'm going to, we should add Ms. Calandra's name, even though it was, all members, had her name for a signature on that.
Thank you for telling me. Actually, I had asked earlier today, and no one seemed to think we had done it, so...
Yeah, we did.
I'm glad to know that you did.
Ms. Labange.
We should add your, add your name to it.
Yeah, I'm trying.
Just wanted to mention, Mr. President, members of the council, Jerry Dunphy, he was very active in a lot of things in the community, which was so fun, and to see someone grow up as, well, I remember growing up, first seeing colored TV, and Jerry Dunphy and the big news, and when news was really news, was really news, and these people worked, and how special he was, and he also was involved at Marshall High School, which was so important. But one of the fond remembrances I have, just a few years ago, there was one of those police chases that ran all the way out to the desert. And you know how they describe them from the helicopters and all that stuff? Jerry was describing it as it went through Palm Springs, country club and golf course by country club and golf course, so I thought it was kind of wild, and it was even a night race, that he was able to describe it from one part of the desert to the other. He was truly a remarkable person, and what is so wonderful is that he able, he must have loved his job. He must have absolutely loved his job to work how he did, and, and God took him quickly, unfortunately, and I'm sorry for his family, but he lived to be 80, which is wonderful, but he loved his job, and educated the people of Southern California on the importance of Southern California. So I wanted to add those words for Jerry Dunphy, and also on someone else who's very special, but he also lived a very good age, Oliver Pellerin, who was a very fanatical fan of the University of Southern California. He and his brother watched 637 straight USC football games, both home and abroad, and he only missed a game last December when they, he hurt his hip and was able to, to attend a game in Las Vegas. His brother Giles attended 697 straight USC games, and his other brother Max attended 300 games, straight games, over since 1945. True Trojans who loved their university, loved their football team, and traveled with him and experienced that part of life. He passed last week. I would like to adjourn in his memory.
Thank you, Ms. Labange. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Michael Angel Noguera Senior. Mr. Noguera Senior passed away on May 19th, 2002. We had just recently, as a council, recognized him for his 80th birthday in December of 2001. He was a member of the Northeast community for 46 years, working in the insurance and real estate business. Was, in his prior, younger days, he was part of the United States Air Force during World War II as an aerial engineer, gunner, and airplane engine mechanic. He was honorably discharged and was a member of American Legion Post 206 in Highland Park, and American Legion Post 43 in Hollywood. He served as the community of Northeast Los Angeles as president of the Breakfast Optimist Club of Highland Park, president of York Valley Chamber of Commerce, finance chairman of the Full Hill District Boy Scouts of America, president of the Northeast Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce, and many different committees in the community. He also was chosen by Mayor Tom Bradley to serve on the commission, as a commissioner for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Supervisor Edward Edman, D. Edelman, also chose him to be a commissioner of the Department of Consumer Affairs. He was a member of the 1984 Olympic Advisory Commission. He was recognized and invited by President and Mrs. Carter to attend the reception in honor of Pope John Paul II in Washington, DC on October 6th, 1979. He was a Northeast Division LAPD Citizen of the Year recipient, recognized by all council members in the area, Peggy Stevens, R. Snyder, Alatorre, and myself. And he was also recognized by past state senators, Alex Garcia, Art Torres, and current state senator, Richard Polanco, as a community activist and citizen worthy of recognition in our district. He's survived by his spouse, Linda Noguera, children, Michael Junior, Yolanda, Picha, Charlie, Mike, Patrick, and Victor. And I will share with you that three weeks ago, he sent me an email complaining that the state was not cleaning up a brownfield on Avenue 50 in York. He was always active, always concerned about the community. It's unfortunate that we have to adjourn in his memory. He's, it's truly a loss to the Northeast community.
I met him almost 27 years ago when I worked for Peggy Stevenson, and he truly was everything that Councilman Pacheco spoke about and more. He was a, such a beacon for that community. He had beautiful children and beautiful family, so it's a loss.
Any others? Mr. Rudy Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, may I invite you to join me in memory of Mary Anna Lawson Jenkins Mayfield, the grandmother of 27, the great-grandmother of 62, and the great-great-grandmother of 21. She's survived by two daughters, four sons, one of whom is Chuck Jenkins, a member of the Eighth District Empowerment Southwest area, one of the neighborhood leaders there, and a long-term city employee in the General Services Department who is now retired. Ms. Jenkins Mayfield will be deeply missed as a grand matriarch of her family.
Any others? Mr. Holden.
President, just a comment reflecting Mr. Labange, who said he watched Jerry Dunphy growing up, watching color TV, and there was a black and white TV, four inches rectangle, and during my growing up. What I'm saying is that it's changed, how times change.
Times do change. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.